All right, welcome, everybody. It's nice to see everybody in the chambers this evening and to see my colleagues again here after our committee of the whole meeting. So I'm going to officially call the submitting of the Kalamazoo City Commission for Monday, August 4, 2025, to order. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Cooney.
Present.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Commissioner Wilson.
President.
Vice Mayor Hess.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borling. May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Pradel?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion passes. We are blessed this evening for our opening ceremony to have Pastor David Cannaverski here from Calvary Bible Church to provide an invocation. And just to let you know, when I ask him to come forward, I'm going to ask everyone in the chambers to stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Thank you, behalf of Calvary Bible Church, for inviting us. We pray for you all constantly in our public services as well. Before I begin our prayer, I was reading this quote by Dietrich Bonhoeffer. He was a German pastor during the 1940s. And he quoted this, and it's a good reminder for everybody in leadership. He says, "One's task is not to turn the world upside down, but to do what is necessary at this given place and with due consideration of reality." Let us pray. Father in heaven, you are a great God, the living God, the true God. You are righteous and just, and yet you abound in steadfast love and faithfulness. You are the Creator and Sustainer, the galaxies majestic in holiness, transcendent and set apart from your creation, and yet in great compassion. You have moved to redeem this fallen world. As the Creator, you are creation's judge, the one to whom everyone must give account, and yet you are a tender father towards those who trust in you. Oh Lord, I approach your throne of grace in prayer to ask for wisdom to govern in times of trial. You know that we are in desperate times as a nation and as a city. Even the words the psalmist asks, "If the foundations are destroyed, what shall the righteous do?" But surely wisdom calls us to look to you, to the sovereign Lord, and you have declared your word that the times are in your hands. And I pray that this commission would boldly and courageously face the unknown future, both in their personal lives and as city commissioners, drawing confidence not in their own virtue and abilities or in their own grit and resolve, but in your power and your love. I pray for the vulnerable of this city, for the homeless, for those of our, many of our veterans, for those caught up in sex trafficking and in drugs, pray for victims of violence and their families, for children who are at risk of harm and abuse, and for so many others. And I also pray for the first responders, for medical staff, for the shelters and the churches throughout the city, and for the so many others who render care. Oh Lord, you are a God who is near to the brokenhearted, a God who saves the crushed in spirit. I pray that you would be near to them, to provide, protect, and comfort them. But I pray particularly that the work of this commission would be a display of your own compassion and care for the least of these. May these council members burn with passion to see the hurting healed and the wounded made whole. May they love justice and mercy and display it in their efforts to alleviate suffering in this community. Pray also that each member of this council would be marked by integrity, by fair-mindedness that lends to the care of others, that the flourishing of this community and all who move within it would be their greatest concern, so that justice would roll down like waters and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream. I pray that you would guard each council member from desires and temptations for dishonest gain, give each one an aversion to corruption, but cause them to be a sane people in the darkness as in the light of this chamber, so that the reputation of this commission and this city will gleam for many years to come. I also pray that collectively, as this body of this city, that their use of authority, though it not be perfect, will reflect your very own. I pray now for the county of Kalamazoo, the city of Kalamazoo. In the words of the parting Kings, David said this, "When one rules justly over men, ruling in the fear of God, he draws on them like the morning light, like the sun shining forth on a cloudless morning, like rain that makes grass to sprout from the earth." I pray that under the guidance of this council, the community of Kalamazoo, its institutions, its residents, and all who pass the time in her streets will flourish like a well-watered field. And finally, I pray that your love supremely disprayed in the sin-bearing death of Christ and his glorious resurrection be known and trusted amongst all of us. But thank you for sending your son to bear your own son on his body, the guilt for our sin, and for all of those who trust in you. Oh Lord, grant this commission blessing and joy this evening as they serve, and may your name be glorified among the members of this body. In the strong name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Let the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Pastor. Appreciate your presence. Well, there are no proclamations this evening, so the next thing on our agenda is the adoption of the formal agenda. Commissioners, are there any either items on the consent agenda you would like to have moved to the regular agenda or other changes you would like in our agenda for this evening? Vice Mayor Hess.
Mayor, I would like to add to new business a report on our city manager's search.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything else, Commissioners? All right, seeing that, the changed agenda stands. Next, Communications. Manager Risma.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Manager Risma. Now is the opportunity for public comments. Just as a reminder, at our business meeting, you will have four minutes for public comments. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. You can comment on any topic of your choice. Also a reminder, this is not a time for dialogue. It's a time for you to express your feelings on any topic. I would encourage you to leave your contact information on the sign-in sheet over there by the clerk, and if there are particular questions you have related to city services, this is a way that people will be able to contact you and get back in touch with you. Is there anyone who wants to make a public comment this evening?
The government is about to give ICE 75 billion to rip babies from their mama's arms, beat workers bloody, deport human beings to foreign prisons, tear gas cars, oil batons, shoot dissenters with rubber bullets. We have no rights that the state chooses to respect at this time. We keep us safe. As Black Lives Matter grassroots stated in their statement on black people and our necessary uprisings against roundups, deportations, and the fascist regime. We are targets whether we're organizing or just leaving our houses. In L.A. and Grand Rapids, our people have no choice. We can't stay quiet anymore. ICE doesn't care about citizenship status. They arrest first, due process, if there is one, could it be trusted? We stand with the community in Grand Rapids and denounce the attack on the community by ICE. Law-abiding immigrants being picked up at their immigration appointments, ICE showing up at schools and at businesses to intimidate, harass, and abduct community members. We support Cocecha and Grand Rapids' rapid response efforts for sanctuary city policies. People need to wake up to the reality of where this country has finally arrived. As grassroots movements, we aim to awaken you and compel you to see what's happening. It's your choice to get on board or not. Regardless, you'll still have to deal with the fact that you stayed quiet. Trump already called Kalamazoo a sanctuary county. Simply saying it is false will not protect us when he starts cutting federal funds, or will the county and city desert its citizens. We're demanding that the city commission denounce 287 G agreements and speak out against attacks on homeless people, not only by the Trump administration, but by KDPS here locally, which we have been bringing before you time and time again. You control KDPS. Hold them accountable and allocate the money towards meaningful, more robust services, not, for example, just one or two social workers for the whole county. His executive order means more sweeps, more roundups, and more displacement, and the silence is concerning. He's been coming for everything since he took office. Reproductive rights, birthright citizenship, trans and queer people's rights and disabled people's rights are most vulnerable. He's funding wars in Palestine and wars on Latinx immigrants here at home. The reality is World War II-level violence. Black, brown, and native and Latinx, we are in a new phase of white nationalism. We have the stark reality of how settler colonialism is weaponized against us with anti-black and anti-brown immigration policies. I do not want to cause panic, but it is not a matter of if, it is a matter of when. Trying to keep a low profile is just a false sense of hope. It is quite frankly a privilege. For those feeling the sense of urgency, let's organize to keep each other safe. Build solidarity with appropriate tools and education and training to mitigate the harm caused to our immigrant communities, locally and nationally. Let's expect our elected officials to be vocal now. The time to take a stand is now. To elected officials, we say this, put your money where your mouth is. Yes, changing policies and politics in general can be long and complex, but building up community just takes time, networks, and supporting grassroots movements without expecting respectability politics from us. Black, brown, native, and Latinx politicians, you may not yet be experiencing the fallout of these dynamics. To the white officials, this is not happening to you. You are not actually experiencing what is happening right now. Right now, you can provide the space and resources to support and mutual, support mutuate efforts in the community, both for the houseless people with grassroots outreach efforts, as well as the immigrant solidarity coalitions, and more importantly, women of color-led efforts. Have your representatives on standby and work on being accessible to the community right now. We appreciate the words and support, but we start, but we want action. We want solidarity with the people over allegiance to a country who is failing its people. This was written in collaboration and perspective of black, brown, indigenous, and Latinx community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wendy Fields. I live in the city of Kalamazoo. I stand before you as the president of the Kalamazoo branch of the NAACP. I just want to come out and publicly thank you all for, I sent an email to you all on June 24th of this year requesting a meeting, and I appreciate and thank each and every one of you for honoring that request. The only one that I've not heard from to schedule a meeting is you, Commissioner Decker, who suggested that we meet by phone. I've not heard anything from you, and I responded to you and said I preferred a face-to-face one-on-one meeting, and I guess I find it very difficult to believe that since June 24th, you've not been able to find an hour to meet with me. So I will be reaching out again and hope that you can come up with a time, because as a commissioner, it's part of your duties and requirements, because I am a constituent, and I do expect to hear from you. I do expect to meet with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I just have a few announcements. Jonathan Yarber with the NACD. We have our National Night Out tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:30. If you can make it, please attend. We also have our Event Center Community Info Session, August 19th, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m., and then our board meeting, a public board meeting shortly after that, from 6:00 to 7:00. I just have to say this, this was very upsetting the other day. Our gun violence is still a big problem, and a woman was just shot a few days ago. I know we're doing amazing work, especially with the KDPS, with taking over, taking and retrieving the guns, but I think that we need to kind of come together and do a little bit more of a strategic approach and do a little something different other than just some of the events that we've been doing reoccurring for the last few years. So I'm willing to be a part of that conversation, and I would love to, you know, have an impact in that space. I want to thank you guys for just publicizing the lead abatement training. That was, that's such a great training that I just read about literally two hours ago, and so thank you for that, and I would love the NACD to be a part of that in some type of capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to take advantage of public comment time this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Commissioners and city staff. I, I'm one of the people that's here often to ask you to work harder on solving our housing crisis, and that's, that's not going to end as long as we are in such a deep housing crisis. But just last month, the county housing department's report on the countywide housing village came out and, for 2024, and the city's role in many of the projects listed here really shines. So I really want to acknowledge what you have done and are doing at the same time that I'm going to be one of the people keeping on asking for more affordability, more units, and more equity. One of the projects in this wonderful report is the Tiny Houses of Hope that Gwendolyn's, Gwendolyn Hooker's vision created. This is the housing village report from the county. It doesn't even mention the city's role here, but I know that the city changed the zoning to make this wonderful project happen, and I know that the city helped on the architecture of these units and probably gave a pilot, because you always do that, and maybe other parts that I don't know about. This is a very exciting project that allows people that landlords are turning a debt, turning away everywhere else to have a safe, dignified, and actually beautiful place to live. The Sugarloaf Mobile Home Park is another one where the city's role's not even mentioned because it's in school craft, but it was the Public Housing Commission that made it happen, which the mayor has been active in for years and which city leaders like Patrice Griffin and Gwendolyn Hooker have also taken leadership. And this means 10 families who've been homeless, families with children have wonderful places to live, and they're from Kalamazoo Public Schools. River's Edge on Harrison Street is going up very fast, and the city's role is acknowledged here. It's very exciting that 184 units will be designated for people at 60% of AMI or less. And there's so much more. Kalamazoo Community Courtyard, city of Kalamazoo approved a 35-year payment in lieu of taxes, it says, and allocated 1,220,000 from the ARPA funds and home funds for this project for survivors of human trafficking and other vulnerable populations. This single-family housing development doesn't say so, but it looks like cities pre-permitted models of housing, which are so beneficial to developers and got a national award, I believe, or at least statewide. And there's more, there's more. The city's one of the employer-assisted housing partners, and the Mount Zion vouchers for senior housing is very exciting because it allows people at 30% of area median income to move into the senior housing that's being built right now. And there's more. I know you already got it, but I wanted people to understand how valuable your role has been, and this does not even count the hotel.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hello. My name's Justin Suarez, and I live on the north side in Kalamazoo. The young lady that spoke about ICE and their plans, unfortunately, there's a lot of truth to that, and they will be here eventually, and I don't think the people of Kalamazoo are going to put up with that. I've, back on the, July 11th, in front of my house across the street, there was a party, and Kalamazoo Public Safety Officers swooped in and raided it. It was a pretty large operation. Several of the officers had masks on covering their faces, the type like you could only see their eyes, and my children were the first to mention that ICE was outside grabbing people. So we ran outside, and that's not what it was. It was KPS. I asked one of the officers why they were wearing masks, why did they feel the need to cover their faces, and his answer to me was, "You should be thanking us. We just got three guns off the street." I'm a truck driver by trade. When I go make a delivery somewhere, they don't walk me through the halls and have the people come out and thank me for getting their stuff. That's a job they chose to do. We're thankful for the job they do every day, and they are, seem to be doing a really good job getting the guns off the street. The next night, it was a Saturday night, a car got pulled over, seemed to be six officers, I believe, were there. One of them had a mask on and fully masked, but he had full-arm tattoos. It's just silly. It seems like they're going after younger people that are causing a lot of the gun violence, that are carrying the guns around. I don't really see what the need for the masks are. Are they trying to intimidate the community? Why do they need to hide their faces? We don't have cartels around here. This is Kalamazoo. Who's telling them to wear masks? It might be in their, in their policy somewhere, but I did go online, I have looked through Kalamazoo Public Safety's policy manual. Chapters one and two are missing in the policy manual. That might be where the uniforms are, but I'm trying to find that, where that is that says they can just have their eyes visible. On the 24th, there was a raid on Northwest Nidge at a barber shop. I have video of two KPS officers wearing masks. One of them waved to me, engaged with me. I asked him to identify himself, which he did, but I couldn't make out his name. I got his badge number, and I said, "I can't make it out on your uniform," and he said, "Well, that's because I'm not wearing it right now." So not only are they masking their faces, but they're taking their name badges off their uniforms as well. There was another officer there with a mask on who pulled the camera out, took a picture of me, and I did go through the policy, and they're not to be taking pictures of the public on their cell phones. They can't have them on them. They're allowed to make phone calls and texts. I wouldn't know who that officer is. Maybe, maybe the chief would be able to identify him, but it's really hard to tell who he is with no name and just being able to see his eyes. He's a white guy. I mean, that doesn't really narrow it down. So the masks, I'm pretty upset about that. I have a lot of things to say to the city. I think overall, we moved here three years ago, and we really, really enjoy living here, but I just wanted to bring those masks to the public's attention. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Just as a reminder, if you would like to sign in with your contact information, yes. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
Hello, my name is Chris Klasser, and I live on the east side. I'm here today to speak against the, against the actions of ICE, and I ask that you do the same. We're told that these mass deportations are for public safety reasons, to get violent people off of the streets. That's despite the fact that immigrants, both documented and undocumented, commit less crime than U.S. citizens, and that's despite the fact that the majority of people that they are arresting and deporting have no criminal history. This isn't a public safety issue. We're also told it's about legal immigration, come in legally, and yet they're deporting legal immigrants. They're even arresting U.S. citizens. Okay? There's no reason for us to be cooperating with ICE, and I hope the city makes that stance clear. We have KDPS. We have people to respond to violent crimes. We do not need ICE in our city. It is causing people to feel afraid of going outside, because like I said, even legal people with paperwork are afraid that they're going to be the next people to get scooped off off the street, off of people with masks and no ID and not knowing where they're going next. Just as a reminder, silence is complicity, so I do remind you to speak today.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jane Goesch with Discover Kalamazoo. I'm present for the agenda item later, but I wanted to take the opportunity to make sure that you all know that the USTA Junior Boys Nationals have begun. So this is one of the most high-profile sporting events that happens in Kalamazoo County. Every American men's tennis player through history that you could possibly name has played here in Kalamazoo. And these young tennis players, before they aspire to go to the U.S. Open or Wimbledon or the French Open, they aspire to come to Kalamazoo. This is the pinnacle of their career for most of them. And the competition right now is happening at Stowe Stadium at Kalamazoo College, as well as Western Michigan University. I believe the Loy Norx rounds have ended, and the play goes through Sunday, when the champions will be crowned in the U-16 and U-18 divisions. And for U-18 singles and doubles, those boys will earn automatic births to the U.S. Open. And if you recently watched Wimbledon and probably this upcoming U.S. Open, you will see boys who played in Kalamazoo as recently as four years ago play and make it all the way to the quarterfinals. So it's an exciting time for our community. We thank the city of Kalamazoo and Kalamazoo College specifically for hosting this event, and if any of you would like to attend, please let me know, because I can definitely facilitate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to take advantage of the public comment period?
Hello. My name's Gwendolyn Hooker. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here a couple of reasons. One, I'm going to start with the good and officially invite everyone here to National Night Out events that are happening. As we know, tomorrow is the annual National Night Out. As the outgoing president of Divine Neighborhood Association, we would like to invite you all tomorrow, 5:00 p.m., we will have our annual meeting, as well as our National Night Out at 5:00 p.m., 5:00 to 7:30. And if anyone wants any, just friendly reminders, I have cards as well. Also, in my neck of the woods, NACD Northside Association for Community Development will also be having a National Night Out where you can find Jabs, and the Jabs Event Factory will be there, and Hope the Navigation will also be at Divine Neighborhood Association as well. So we'll be doing double duty. And I would like to figure out, and I know one of you up here knows, where I can find the ordinance on public street parking. Everyone knows about the Tiny House project, and we are having an issue with our tenants that stay at the Tiny Houses getting tickets. Their parking in what the city, the site plan was approved for these parking spaces to be allocated to the Tiny Houses tenants. There's one specifically, that was specifically made on North Street for that project, and they're still getting tickets there, and I'm not really sure who would be my first point of contact to figure, figure that all out. And if I, if you can direct me to where the ordinance is, because it's seemingly something about overnight parking, even if there's not a sign, there's still not overnight parking, whether there's a sign or not, and I'm not really familiar with that. So someone can shoot me an email or let us, let me know where that ordinance is and who I should contact regarding the Tiny Houses tenants and how we can navigate them, the tickets that they're getting. So, thank you so much, y'all. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone again, my name is Tina McClintock and I live on Lake Street. I live in that known floodplain area that you refuse to fix or do anything about. You know, we just flooded twice already with those storms, just that little bit of rain made your storm drains flood all over Kalamazoo. Flooded on Woodward Street, flooded on Crosstown, I could go on and on and name a ton of streets. Gordon's Water Service flooded again, Vine Street flooded, all the way down to Mill Street flooded. When are you going to do something about this? You seem to come up with money for everything expensive that you want downtown. You fix the infrastructure downtown, but yet in my neighborhood, your sewers back up into our cell pumps from the groundwater every time it floods. Something's wrong with your sewers, something's wrong with your storm drains, something's wrong with you not fixing everything. You always seem to come up with money for everything else. I just don't understand. Two-way downtown, it was two-way in 1961, didn't work then and it's surely probably not going to work now. But you want to try it and waste the money? Go ahead. An arena that nobody wants, but the rich. Everything is all about what money wants. It's nothing about any of the regular people, the real people of Kalamazoo, the people who make Kalamazoo Kalamazoo, the people who care about people who live in Kalamazoo, not just money. It's not always all about money. Poor neighborhoods need things too, they need things fixed, people need homes to live in. But instead, when you build affordable housing, you want to know where you always put them, in floodplains, on contaminated land, in crime-ridden neighborhoods, never, ever have there been one put in a nice neighborhood, never. Why? Why is it for people who are low income, who don't have that much money, barely survive, have to live on contaminated soil, have to live in a floodplain, have to live in all these places that you put people, it's only because you want them away from downtown? It's all, to you guys, it's all about downtown and that's the way a lot of us feel. There's a lot of people, I feed people at the mission, I see a lot, I see a lot of people sleeping on the sidewalks, I see people passed out, I see people, they smell food coming out of the mission, but they can't eat at noon, they can only have dinner there. They can have breakfast there if they stay there overnight, but they got to follow the rules and some people don't want to. But still doesn't mean that you have to starve people to death. When I go feed, when I go feed the children that come off the streets and the children in the daycare at the mission, those kids appreciate that meal. I mean, it's food. And you've got a lot of people starving out here in Kalamazoo. And then the sky is talking about police with masks, what is that? Why aren't we trying to protect our citizens of Kalamazoo? No matter what color you are, you should be protected. All of y'all should be for the people of Kalamazoo, not just the rich, not just the wealthy, but for everybody. Kalamazoo can do better than what it's doing. It should not be just cram, cram, cram. And when you build affordable apartments, you put 10 apartments out of 100 that people can afford. How is that affordable? How is that helping anybody? How is that helping all the people that I see every day, sleeping outside by the railroad tracks, sleeping on the ground, anywhere, because they have nowhere else to go? Kalamazoo's become very sad the way it's being ran lately. And you know what, voting's coming up, guys, time for Jane.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pearl Brown. It was brought to my attention that a few years ago, a resolution was already printed out and was waiting to be signed so we could confirm that this is a sanctuary city. Due to the advice of a member of our community, misguided as it was, that resolution failed. I'm here to no longer ask about resolutions, but policy. What does Kalamazoo have prepared for when ICE comes? Because it's no longer about if they'll come, let's put our heads down, let's not draw attention to us. Attention's already here. Attention's already been brought. So what policies, what steps have, has this city made when ICE does come? Because October 1st is when the new fiscal year begins and the money will drop and it will, and ICE is already in Bowdoin and they're already around in Kalamazoo County, in our surrounding areas. So like I said, it's not a matter of if they're going to come to Kalamazoo, it's a matter of when, and we need to make sure that we do not cooperate. We can tell them no. Other mayors have said no. Other cities have said no. And this administration needs to hear no. And if you can't find them, then let us set this example. Let us set the example for the rest of the cities here in Michigan, to show them that we're not going to bend over. So I say, let's create policy to protect the families of your constituents. Because like I said last time, if this city doesn't, then our community will. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to take opportunity to speak during
My name is Shona, y'all know who I am. At the end of the day, it comes down to that this commission needs to grow a backbone. Y'all need to stand up and realize your citizens are at risk in every single way. Our children, our veterans, our seniors, our Black, Brown and Indigenous communities. ICE is coming and they don't care if you're not from a different country, they don't care if you're undocumented. If you're Black or Brown, they're coming and we know this, look at history. History is repeating itself and we know that. So the time is now, not when they come and if they come, because we know at the end of the day, the mighty dollar is going to buy this mayor and make sure that ICE will come and do what it's supposed to, that y'all want it to do, because y'all going to lose funding. But y'all need to stand up and be like, no matter if y'all lose funding or not, y'all citizens come first. And that should be the most important, not money, not people that look white, not rich people, this whole community means something. And that's something y'all need to take in consideration. Don't sell us out for the next dollar, because at the end of the day, the city has money, but it needs to use it wisely, instead of using it on things that's not needed. We don't need that stadium. That stadium, all that money could have went towards making sure that people have housing or people are not about to be out on the street, because we know once that big beautiful bill hits and rolls out, how many more people are going to be out on the street? Because they can't afford their bills, they can't afford healthcare, they have to pay more money for groceries because there is no food stamps, there is no WIC, there is no free meals at school. We know this is coming. So many more people are going to be out on the street and then what, what are y'all going to do? Anderson, what are you going to do? Are you going to be more mad because people are out in the street and making the city not look nice like a little bowl that you want? No. Y'all have to remember, it's election year, there's so many y'all seats up for reelection. And we know who we want and who we don't want, and we're going to do everything in our power to make sure those that are up for reelection and want to be reelected will not have those seats. Because it's unfair to us that's out here in this community that y'all aren't taking these problems and issues seriously. Our children deserve better and they're out on these streets every night, there's babies, there's toddlers, there's elementary kids, middle school, high school, college students out on the street. And why? This city has money and can do better. It can do better in so many different ways. Start holding each other accountable, ask yourselves, what would y'all do if y'all, y'all child, y'all grandma, y'all mother, y'all father, y'all grandparents were the ones out here on the street and KDPS is out here being disrespectful to them, throwing their things away, talking to them as they're less than? Think about that. Think about if that was the person that you love, because you know what, if it was mine, I'd be pissed like I am now, because even though we're not blood related, those are people that I care about. Do better, hold yourself accountable. Anderson, we coming for you.
Thank you. Next, please. If you could not put up signs that keeps people from being able to see the people on the dais, if you want to hold a sign, you could stand along the side so it won't block other people's view. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Claire Dine, I live in the vine, I hate talking in front of people, so I'm sorry if this is rough. But I'm here to underline everything that everyone here so far has said. I'm newer to social justice and to activism, but I'm adopting a stance of listening and learning as quickly and thoroughly as I can. That said, I did want to briefly add, what is being, that what is being asked by the organizers from the direct action that was outside on the steps today is the absolute bare minimum. Stopping the sweeps on the unhoused community and saying no to Agreement 287G is the bare minimum. We will not stop here, we are going to hold you accountable to do your part to dismantle the current racist colonial and capitalistic structures and then importantly, the building of something new that will truly be for the people, not just for optics. You might wonder how we will build these new systems. Well, something that we say in the recovery community is that when you have the why, the how unfolds in front of you. So okay, why build, why build these new systems? Because we are not safe until we are all safe, we are not free until we are all free and it is not if ICE comes to Kalamazoo, it is when. I am in behavior analysis at Western, so let me tell you from that perspective, we are not just going to hold you accountable through these meetings and through voting. In addition to that and many, many other angles, including pressure through direct action, I want you to know that we will be taking data. We will be analyzing the antecedent conditions of grant and donation offers that you receive and pressure you received, you receive from the fascist administration to comply. We will analyze the consequences for our community members and our neighbors and we will analyze the money received by this city as it flows in. Lastly, and most importantly, we will analyze your behavior, the decisions you make, how you show up, the candidates you support and the policies you enact and how they intersect with the contingencies upheld by the problematic structures that I mentioned earlier. Once we analyze the data, we will discuss our future directions. This includes how we will show up as a community, how we will act, vote, organize, create safety networks, mutual aid, learn, grow, become advocates, become accomplices and dismantle existing structures and create new ones in their place. Right now is the time to work with your community, not against it, we will be watching, we will be recording, we will be analyzing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, Savano Benegas. I moved here 2008 and like you, I love this city, I made it my home. I started a business here back in 2010 and I've been here ever since, obviously, I'm not going anywhere. I just want to amplify some of the voices that we've heard time and time again here. ICE is coming, whether we like it or not, homelessness is a problem, it's up 20%, 19%, however many percent, it's a problem here in our community. We don't have enough, enough housing, we don't have enough affordable housing, we don't have enough food and we can do something about that collectively. And to speak to the guy that said there's cops here wearing masks like ICE, if I see somebody masked up in my neighborhood and I'm on the south side, if I see somebody masked up, I'm thinking they're a robber. I'm taking shit into my own hands. So think about that, if the police are, are being encouraged to wear masks in our town, they're putting their lives in jeopardy. That's all I have to say for today. Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment this evening? All right, see no one, I want to thank everyone who took the time and made the effort to come down here and take advantage of the public comment period. Next, Consent Agenda, Managerisma.
Following items are presented for approval. First, approval of a contract supplemental and change order with Nisswander Environmental LLC for FEMA compliance, map revisions, construction oversight and three years of monitoring in the amount of $137,000. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental with Miller Canfield for legal services and a budget amendment in the amount of $150,000. Next is the approval of a contract extension with Treeworks Incorporated for the 2025 hazardous tree removal project in the amount of $195,104.66. Next, the approval of a two-year term contract with Continental Land Services for industrial uniform rental and cleaning services for the Department of Public Services in the amount of $300,000. Next is the approval of a contract with Ram Construction Services for parking ramp concrete repairs in the amount of $433,734. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with Fain Zeilstra LLC for the removal of an underground fuel tank and installation of new power distribution equipment, including standby power equipment at the Augusta Webster Lift Station in the amount of $461,407. Next is the approval of a contract with Corby Energy Services through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for sanitary sewer lining in the, in the, in support of the water main construction project between water stations 14 and 5 in the amount of $541,455.50. Next is the approval of a contract with Arrive through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for 52 Flowbird Parking Touch Pay stations in the amount of $545,480. Next is the approval of a purchase with McQueen Equipment LLC through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for a combination of sewer cleaner in the amount of $607,803.3. Approval of a contract with Northern Pump and Well Incorporated for the Bourne Courtwell I dash, or 1-7 in the amount of $982,088. Next is the adoption of a resolution approving budget amendments for the fiscal year 2025 budget, increasing revenues by $34,800 and expenditures by $186,867. Next is the approval of a request from St. Mary Catholic Church to publicly display fireworks on their property at 939 Charlotte Avenue on August 15, 2025. Next is the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Kalamazoo County to support the Finding Your Way Home Program. Next is the approval of a memorandum of agreement with the Kalamazoo Public Schools for the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety to provide a school resource officer services for the 2025-2026 school year. Next is the approval of the mayor's reappointments to the following boards, commissions and committees, the reappointment of Nick Griffith to the Retirement and Perpetual Care Investment Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2028, and the reappointment of Joshua Sledge to the same committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2028, and the reappointment of Dean Bergy to the same committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2028, and the reappointment of Sandy Doctor to the retirement, to the same committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2028. And finally, approval of the minutes from the City Commission Meeting on July 21, 2025.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Manager Ritzma. Commissioners, requested action is a motion to approve items 1 through 16 and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hoffman, supported by Commissioner Wilson. Clerk Barley, please call a roll.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. Next, we are at the regular agenda, City Manager Ritzma.
Item H1 is approval of an agreement with the Kalamazoo County to create the Kalamazoo County Event Center Assessment District Authority.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a report on this item?
Nope. The agenda reports attached, I and the city attorney were involved in putting this agreement together, mostly the city attorney, but we also had a presentation by Jane Goesch, who's here also from Discover Kalamazoo, to answer any questions, and we'll certainly be able to do the same.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Commissioners, questions on this item? This is not brand new to us. We've had a detailed explanation about what's going on with this, but Commissioner Cooney, question?
Thank you, Mayor. I wonder if Jane could come up just... I just have a couple of questions. I think this is a wonderful project I'm excited about. I just have a couple of questions about it. One thing that's a little trouble to me is four days a week, it's going to be open to the community, right? Kids can come there. Is that right?
Is that the question? Generally speaking, it will be open to the community when there is not tournament activity taking place. So because it's being funded by the assessment on the hotels, the primary benefit needs to go to the hotels, which is those overnight stays which come from tournaments. We obviously aspire to book tournaments potentially every weekend of the year. You know, depending, there is a seasonality to these sports, and that may not be possible, which would make the facility available for community use more than just those four days a week.
Okay.
And conversely, there could be a time, for example, over a holiday weekend or during the summer, when there is a tournament that would then potentially displace, you know, local youths. But those are rare. Most of these, because the kids have school and other weekday activities that'd be coming for the tournaments, most sports tournaments are held on the weekend.
Yeah, okay, great. Is there a bus line that's right near there?
There are two bus lines that are right near there. One goes north and south on Drake, and one goes east-west on West Main. And I have had conversations with Sean McBride from the Metro Transit, and he is open, in particular for the line that goes north-south along Drake, to create a loop that would enable residents to be dropped off right at the facility. He's open to it. Obviously, a lot more exploitation needs to be done.
Wonderful. And my other question is, who's going to staff this when the neighborhood kids are there? Who's his staff?
Who's the staff? You said when the neighborhood kids are there?
Yeah.
The... Generally speaking, the recommended model from our consultants is to hire a third-party operator who would be managing the facility really, you know, 24/7, not just at tournament time, but also when there's local groups as well.
Okay.
And there are several, there's potentially local options for that, as well as national options. So that's something, once the authority is established as a result of, you know, this vote tonight, and then Wednesday at the county commission, we hope to have our first authority board meeting on the 11th, and that's when we'll discuss what the operating models are and start to issue RFPs and so forth.
That's great. And I just think there's so much potential to this, and I think Western Michigan University could be very involved in this with their athletic programs and their phys ed department, where they train people to do this. It's right near there and everything else. So, wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And may I add that in addition to being a great opportunity for the Western Michigan University students, I think it could also be a great recruiting tool for Western Michigan University, as well as our Kalamazoo Valley Community College and Kalamazoo College. And the USTA event that I just mentioned here, I don't think it's a coincidence that Kalamazoo College has a phenomenal track record in NCAA III tennis, national championships, because every strong men's tennis player has played at Stowe Stadium.
I totally agree. I'm looking for NBA players coming out of it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Jane. I think last time I asked you a question regarding accessibility, especially in terms of entrance and cover fees.
Yep.
I think last time it was a little too early in the process for those conversations to have been had. I was just wondering if you guys were having those ongoing conversations regarding accessibility and making sure that everyone can access this.
We've had a little bit more progress, but until the authority, you know, board is formed, it's hard to have, you know, those detailed conversations. But we have begun conversations with the Kalamazoo Community Foundation, because one of the things that they have told us is that they often have requests from people for grants to subsidize access to facilities, but then the facilities aren't there, you know, for the access. And we think this could be a really great partnership, actually, so that the Kalamazoo Community Foundation, again, is very preliminary conversations, they're not, no one's committing to anything, but I think it was, it is very positive that there could be a possibility there.
Thank you.
Other questions for Jane Goesch? Thank you very much, Jane. Other questions for anyone else on our team? Attorney Liao or Manager Ritzma? All right. Thank you. Now is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to comment on this item. That would be item H1 specifically on the Kalamazoo County Event Center Assessment District. Anyone who wants to comment on this item? C. No one. Commissioners, the recommended action is motion to approve. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Cooney, supported by Commissioner Wilson. Discussion, commissioners? Vice Mayor Hess.
You know, I'm just really grateful to Discover Kalamazoo, to Jane for the energy and the thought and the time she's put into making this come to fruition. I know that your concern is for the kids, and your concern is for the kids, and my concern is for the kids, that you can learn from being on a court or in a court or on a team. And some of the greatest life lessons come from that, and it should be accessible to all the kids in Kalamazoo County and specifically in Kalamazoo City. So I'm just really grateful to you, Jane, for really championing this project. And while, yes, while it can make a lot of money for the hoteliers, it can make a lot of good for the city of Kalamazoo. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? I just wanted to follow up on that, Vice Mayor, and just say my profound gratitude to Discover Kalamazoo for leading on this work. The unfortunate position that we sit in, all of you, my great colleagues and I, is devising a budget and determining where we're going to spend our money. And we certainly have people that show up on a regular basis and suggest that we should be spending more money in one area rather than another. And we are in the situation of not being able just to allocate 100% of our resources one way or another. We have a lot of plates spinning. And this is the kind of thing, Commissioner Cooney, we have talked about for years. And think about if we were deciding that the city of Kalamazoo somehow or another was going to fund a huge complex like this. I don't think, I mean, it is, it would not be possible. We would not have the resources. So now we have a situation, literally, where for the most part, people who are visiting Kalamazoo County are going to be paying to create this facility. People that are coming here and staying in our motel infrastructure are going to be paying a tax to help support this. I really appreciate that very creative approach to it, and the fact that by creating this resource, that it's going to give young people in our city and in the county access to what is going to be a state-of-the-art facility for people to use seven days a week. I really look forward to it. I know the details are not completely worked out, but if we get that NBA, then, Don, I want to sit next to you and watch that game. Clerk Barley, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. The motion passes. Next is item H2, Manager Ritzma.
Adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation limited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $20,415,000 for the purpose of financing fiscal year 2025 capital projects.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report on this item?
Yeah, our CFO, Steve Vicinci, is going to come forward and give a brief overview of this recommended action.
Welcome CFO Vicinci.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Yeah, just a brief review. Back in March, we came with our initial notice of intent to bond, which covered, you know, a majority of the 22 million we're asking for tonight, or 20 million, sorry. And then we came back in May after some budget amendments that were needed for some building projects that are in process, that we need more funding to, you know, build and finish those projects. So we publicly noticed that extra budget amendment in May of 2025. And so each one of those notices provides a 45-day petition period for the public to petition if they have any concerns about us bonding these dollars. These were not petitioned in any way. So now we are free and clear to move forward with the bonding process. And then just a few highlights, you know, we are coming forward and asking for 2 million less than we anticipated back in May. We're able to kind of look at our cash flow and our outlook for some of our projects and kind of lessen that impact to our budget a little bit. And then just a reminder, these are, these bonds are funding our parks programs, our, you know, parking updates and repairs, heavy equipment, our local and major streets programs as well, and then also, you know, city buildings and infrastructure, as I kind of mentioned a few times already. So we're just at the point now where we need this final approval before we can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Vicinci. Questions, Commissioner? It's not brand new to us, but no more questions at this time? Thank you, Steve. Now is the opportunity for anyone who's here in the chambers to comment on this item, specifically item H2. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? C. No one. The recommended action, Commissioners, is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Cooney.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Vicinci, I just want to say thank you for always finding a way to find extra money that seems to be somewhere. So I appreciate that. That's less funding, that the city's going to have to bond, less debt that we're going to be in, and another $2 million to use on something else that the city needs. So thank you for that.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? C. None. Clerk Barley, please call a roll.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next, Reports and Legislation, Manager Ritzma.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items this evening. First, as was mentioned earlier, tomorrow evening is National Night Out, so our representatives from my office, City Manager's Office, and Public Safety will be out together and visiting the various neighborhood events. So I look forward to that. Also, on August 15, which is a week from Friday, at Lunchtime Live, there's going to be a youth and teen talent party. So it's going to involve music, dance, comedy, and more, and youth, a youth talent show again on August 15. This is held in partnership with the Kalamazoo Civic Theater and the Kalamazoo Youth Action Council. And finally, should have been today, the beginning of this, of a weeks-long airborne survey of underground aquifers. So you'll see a helicopter flying with a antenna, actually, about 100 feet above the ground. It's a hexagonal antenna that is mapping our aquifers and getting up to 900 feet deep underground. So pretty amazing. But just as you may notice that, don't be scared. And they also are only flying above open areas, not homes or buildings. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Next on our agenda, new business. Vice Mayor Hess.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to bring up information that our subcommittee would like to bring forward regarding our city manager search. It is ongoing, and we would like to give an update about where we are, our next steps, and our efforts to be clear and transparent with and for the community. Our commission subcommittee of Commissioner Prado, Commissioner Wilson, and myself, along with city staff and Attorney Liao, have been working with our city, our search firm, Raftellis. And we want to be sure internally that we include community in that process. And most importantly, our city manager search landing page is, as I speak, live as of today. So we want you to know that you can go to www.kalamazoo-city.org/citymanagersearch, and you will be able to find that. You will also be able to click on the city manager search survey and give us your input about what you'd like to see in a city manager. That is available on the page as well. Paper surveys are also going to be available at the National Night's Out. They will be available at the Lunchtime Lives. Paper surveys will be available downstairs at the South Street entrance, just outside the clerk's office. So if you choose not to go online to the QR code here and do the survey, you can fill one out, and it will get to Raftellis, and your voice will be heard. They will be, the surveys will be open and available from today, August 4 through August 24. We are looking, Raftellis is looking to use this information and to post the job the week of the 18th and make it live nationally the week of August 18. Next week, Pamela Weidman, our representative from Raftellis, will be joining us for a committee of the whole, where she will present here the current brochure, timeline, and city manager first-year goals. That said, I need to move, I would like to move, that we set a special committee of the whole for August 11, 2025, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. next week.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Moved and supported. Are you going to, is this the end of your report here, then?
No. Just a few.
You wanted to take, okay.
So at that committee of the whole, we will, Pamela will be here, and she will be available for public comment as well. So we will have public comment at that committee of the whole. Just lastly, deep gratitude to all of the city staff who have been working on this, the media folks in our media and communications offices, to our clerk's office, and for all of the staff for their help with this process. This does not happen without them, and we are extremely grateful. And in order for the timeline to move forward and for us to be able to welcome a new city manager in a timely fashion, this is what we have to do, and we will have this special meeting, this committee of the whole. So that is the end of my report.
Thank you very much. So a motion's been made and supported discussion. Commissioners, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. I am just wondering, first of all, I think it's great that we've got the survey going online. Is the survey also in Spanish?
That is a good question. It has been heard by those who can translate it into Spanish. Yes.
Perfect. And then also with that, translating in the Spanish, will the paper copies also be available in Spanish for National Night Out tomorrow?
If you're listening, people who can do that, we will do our best to make that happen. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I think that's, you know, being transparent and make sure we are communication, and we just had a great presentation about communication today. I think any- I think anything that ever goes out within the city should always be in English and in Spanish, especially with our Hispanic population that's here. So going forward, I hope I or we never have to ask that question again, that it's always done.
Absolutely. And I'm sorry I don't know the answer to your question. It already probably has been done. So I will, I will, it's definitely known by those who need to know.
Other discussion, Commissioners? I just want to say one thing is that I do very much appreciate the extra work, attention, energy that the three Commissioners and this side of the dais are putting into this effort. It's taken a lot of meeting time outside of the Commission meetings here. And I think a lot of attention to detail has already been demonstrated by Vice Mayor Hess, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Pradel. So appreciate it. I know you're not done. But thanks for bringing it this far, and I look forward to this next, more public version of this process we're going through. Clerk Burling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Vice Mayor Hess?
Paper copies and QR codes should be available outside this meeting space. And they're certainly online right now. So thank you.
Thank you again. Now is the opportunity for Commissioner comments. Commissioner Wilson?
Thanks, Mayor. Firstly, I wanted to take some time and to congratulate and recognize Ms. Gwen Lanier on her retirement. Well-deserved. Lifelong dedication to recovery and community empowerment through her Mothers of Hope organization. As I mentioned, a very well-deserved retirement, and Kalamazoo will miss you. Secondly, I had the opportunity to travel with a group of delegates, as well as Commissioner Decker, to our sister city, New Mizzou, Japan. I just wanted to thank my fellow Commission for supporting us and also holding down the fort while we were gone. It was very, I like to say, the most spiritually rewarding trip I've ever taken. I was just floored by how welcoming and respectful the people were, not only to us as visitors, but also to each other as a community. Again, I just want to thank you. And thank you to the people of New Mizzou for being such gracious hosts.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Wilson, it was an honor to to travel with you. I think we both experienced a little bit of a spiritual awakening and understanding of how different communities work together and how individuals truly care about one another and the pride that they take in their city. So that was definitely something that I took away. I mean, in Japan, they, there are things there that we, I know we can do here. I know we can do them here. We had a gentleman talking about, you know, food insecurities. Just about every single house that we saw had a garden. And I know we have some of those gardens that are here in the city, but, you know, how else can we really bring that forward and really work on that so we can help our food insecure individuals that live here within the community? I just, yeah, it was definitely eye-opening of why we do our work.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo Commissioner Wilson's commendation to Gwen Lanier, an icon in his community, done wonderful things with the Mothers of Hope, but also at Ministry with Community, touched so many lives. And we're going to miss her around here. I want to say that I think that the people who came here talking about what ICE is doing are exactly right. I think the brutality and the inhumanity with which this whole thing has been addressed bears, forces us to speak out against it. And making people afraid to go out into the parks, to go to school, to go to church, that's just unacceptable. Violating people's rights by just picking people up, not giving them access to lawyers, not giving them, looking to see whether they are actually belonging here or not, that's just unacceptable. It's against, it's, there are humane ways to deal with these issues. I think all of us would want people that have committed violent crimes to be expelled from the country. But people who have lived here, worked hard, taken care of their families, even married people who are citizens, there's a more humane way to deal with this and a more respectful and way to deal with this. I want to commend our police, who for years have gone out to the Hispanic community and the Muslim community to assure them that they will protect them as well as any other person in our community. And that is so important, and I thank them for doing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, and I typically don't do this, but I have to support what you're saying. This is not a partisan issue that is getting ready to come into our community. This is a human rights issue. And if we want to be on the right side of this, we will take a bold stand and ensure that every, not citizen, every resident of Kalamazoo County is protected. It's very important that we do that. This is not a time when they say, your silence is complicit. That is true. It is true. And it is time for us to speak up and speak out on behalf of all of the residents of our community. The thing is this, we have undocumented residents in our community, but they also sow into our tax base as well. So when you think about everything that's happening, they are giving just like every one of us. So I hope that we will be courageous, that we will be bold, and that we will take a stand on behalf of human beings within our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Vice Mayor Hess?
Just really quickly, Mayor, I just, I do want to invite everyone out to the National Nights Out. Tomorrow night, they some begin at 4:00, 4:30, 5:00, and go all the way through, some through 9:00 PM. So get out, get your, get to know your neighbors and celebrate. And big thanks to Public Safety and to some community planning, economic development, and City Manager's Office for participating in those. And that I will say, I will say, please, if you can, if you have not ever been to that and seen the youth talent show on the 15th, on Friday the 15th at Lunchtime Live, it is worth the price of admission, which is free. But it's, it's totally worth it to see the young people of Kalamazoo performing, and it's heartwarming, and it is a wonderful slice of our community. And come on out and support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Guess I'll kind of wrap this up with this, is that that is heartbreaking again to go through another weekend and have somebody suffer the effects of gun violence. It's discouraging. And I really do appreciate the work that Public Safety is doing. And I also appreciate the comment this evening about what can we do in advance that's more proactive. And I'm not sure if we have all the answers to that. So any thoughts along those lines? Very helpful. I can tell you, though, that one thing that we are doing, which I believe will have payoff over a decade or longer, is the Police Athletic League. And I had the honor this weekend of standing next to Johnny Berry, who coordinates our PALS program for the youth Detroit Lions football camp. And Detroit Lions do about 30 of these camps around the state, and one of them they do here in Kalamazoo. So it was great to have young men out there being run through drills by staff from the Detroit Lions organization, and then hearing some wise words from a gentleman who was retired, and I'm sorry I'm blanking on his name. Chief, you might know who I'm talking about, but retired Detroit Lions, you know, player. But it was very evident that the young people there were very excited to have this person in their presence. And maybe, I was just going to think that a situation like that, where maybe you hear something from someone other than your parent or your aunt, and maybe it sinks in a little different way. And I really appreciate all that effort. I think it's worth it. And that's one, one of the things that we are doing to, long-term, address the issues we're talking about. So I appreciate all those efforts. Look forward to seeing everybody in a week now. Just a reminder about that is that we don't normally meet on the next Monday. So just a reminder for the community, we are having a Committee of the Whole meeting, not our normal schedule, specifically to talk about the city manager hiring process. I love you, Kalamazoo. We adjourn.